I'll officially call the October 26, 2016 work session of the Town Board to order. Let the ministry reflect that. All the board members are here, a number of members of staff and some audience members as well, so welcome to everyone. We have the minutes of September 28 before us, and I would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move second.
Move second and any discussion. Seeing no discussion, the minutes will stand approved as written. Thank you, Lisa, as always. We are all current with all of our monthly reports through September. We have no public hearings this evening, and we do have one guest, and it involves the art gallery at 1822-1826 Penfield Road requesting a streamlined process. And I think everyone has got some material that Mr. Costello had submitted. And with that, Mr. Cos, I'll let you tee that up for us.
Hey, Tony, I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Darlin the other day. He indicated his interest in opening up an art gallery in the remaining portion of the section of the Omnisonic Lodge that's not being used at this point in time. He requested that he be allowed to come in and talk to you to see if it was possible to get a streamlined approval process, because if he doesn't get one, I think we're probably going to be into late December or early January with a public hearing if we need one. So with that, I'll let you give the board a breakdown as to what you're proposing.
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to open earlier in the Christmas season if I can, so that's why I'm here. It's Cindy Corrigan's property on that corner. It's 1826 Penfield Road. There's a secondary section there that's about 1,000 square feet, just short of 1,000 square feet. Looking to house and to promote local artists. I have no interest at all in kind of higher-end outside of town talent, really looking for, trying to find, you know, Western New York artists and artisans and craftspeople and jewelers and people like that that we can, you know, help promote and see if we can do some sales. So that's really the purpose of the business. I'm following a model of the business that's based on a couple of galleries that I've become well acquainted with out of Louisville, Kentucky. So I think it's a good model. And then, you know, with that location, I think it's ideal for the kind of use that we're talking about. I think that's a real crossroads between a lot of different towns, so.
So is this a case that folks would bring in their particular wares and you would have it displayed for them? They'd sell it, you would manage and take a piece of that, the rest would go to them?
Exactly.
And then?
Assignment model.
And they would have, they'd have the opportunity to change it up either month-to-month or whatever?
Absolutely.
As needed and things like that.
Right. And then for me, it'll part of the diversification of my portfolio, if you will, is having lots of different artists, right? And trying to cover a lot of different people's likes and needs in that arena, so.
Do you have another, another gallery like this?
Not right now, uh-uh.
Would you solely be involved in this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what would the hours be?
Right now, my, I think I listed the hours as 10 till 7:00 or 8:00 p.m. Typical retail hours. You know, my marketing review of the area showed there's a lot of galleries, but they're not open very reasonable hours usually. They're, and they're usually focused on only a couple artists or a specific type of art. So try to make it more of a retail type of environment for local artists and try to take, you know, a lot of the artists I've talked to just want to do their art, right? They don't want to do the sales and marketing and all the background at work, all the business side. That's what I'm good at.
And what do you call, what's it called?
Whitman Works Company.
And do you do anything yourself as part of that? I mean, are you?
I run it.
Yeah, but do you make jewelry? Are you an artist or anything?
Oh, yeah, I'm an artist as well.
So you'll have some of your materials there as well?
Maybe.
Okay.
If I get any better at it, maybe I will.
What kind of do you have in mind to expand beyond a gallery more like a, almost like a gift shop type of, like a retail, like you said, where?
Yeah, but probably in probably the mid-range price range, right? Yeah.
Would you be like that? I'm thinking of like you go to festivals and they'll have paintings, but you can also get like prints of a painting or?
Exactly.
That kind of thing?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd really like, especially I've done a lot of the show, went to a lot of the shows, and there's a lot of like Rochester or Western New York-focused artwork that I think, you know, I think is really popular, and I think that's the kind of thing I would like to try to focus on selling.
And could you give us a sense, so you've got approximately 1,000 square feet, I mean, how many different artists might you have, you know, at any one time?
I'm thinking maybe 20 to 30.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And where's your signage going to be?
Right now, it'll just be window signage. There was, up until about a week ago, an overhanging sign.
Yeah, the old expressions photography.
Exactly, and it's been, it's been relocated to provide signage for the Art Stop.
Okay.
I may at some point want to readdress having a similar type of sign, but at this point, I don't have a plan for that.
And so you did mention in your letter that you submitted regarding the parking, and, you know, you'd indicated that there are parking spots in front of the building. If those are full and your folks have to park in the public parking around the corner, any experience that will they drive past the store and say, "I'll check, I'll check in again tomorrow," or?
Could happen. If I'm that busy, I'll be happy. You know, I think my experience with this kind of location is that 13, 13 parking spaces are more than adequate. It's pretty, I think it'd be pretty rare that we'd have more need for that, and if it would be, it would probably be for a special occasion, and at which point I'd direct people to park in that area. Or I would probably try to subcontract from the Marx Pizzeria guys to allow some parking in the church building there next door.
Yeah, soon to change hands.
That's why I'm here.
Soon to change hands, okay.
You mentioned special events. Would you be looking to have, you know, get, other than maybe an opening, but gallery special events? Or would you be, would you be renting out for special events, like if someone wanted to have some sort of party there or something?
Maybe. I wouldn't be against that. My, the areas, the space is actually broken up into a front and back space, and the front space is, I'm going to be focused on having be more retail style.
That's right, it's more elongated.
And in the very back, it's, it's actually broken up a little bit. In the back will be more traditional gallery space for featured artists every month, and we'll have an opening and those kinds of things, so.
True. Nice. And when would you like to open?
Soon as possible. I can't, my lease doesn't start until November 1st, and it's going to take me a good month to do renovations anyway. So she's having a grand opening at the Art Stop next door on November 22nd. I'd like to be operating by then, but we'll see. It all depends on how quickly I can find artists and how quickly I can get that set up, so.
I certainly feel like this lends itself to a streamlined process for sure. So Jim, what timeframe-wise, what could you be looking at?
Well, I can prepare the permit resolution. We have our streamlined permit resolution. I'll have that done probably first thing next week, so that would be, you know, I'll get it out to you and take a look at to make sure you're comfortable with it. If you aren't?
Have that for the gentleman?
Process it at the time. Well, we don't even need to do that. We'll process it with the town clerk.
Okay.
If you're, if you're okay with it, and then get them started.
I think you need to do this kind of cosmetic stuff to this site. You're not doing anything of a structural nature.
No, there's a drop ceiling that I'm removing. There's a little partition wall that I'm taking out, but it's not structural at all. I'm putting hardwood floors in. It's going to be really nice, so it's actually kind of.
Yeah, I would think that you might want to just have our marshal or the building inspector go to visit you and just see what's necessary for a permit or not, not anything.
Sure.
And that would normally be part of the correspondence that you would provide as you go through to document, memorialize the discussion tonight, talk about signage and if in fact there are going to be some signs down the road other than the window signs that, that has to come back, back in for review and things.
That's right.
Talk about, talk about the, you know, the parking component, and would you, would you look to have yourself and your, and anyone that's working for you park in the public parking location?
Yes.
To help free up spots in front. So I think that would be one thing that would also be included in that letter, Cos.
You and I also talked about the fact that you are a contractor by trade and you have some skills. Any intent on your part to do anything with the property owner to do any improvements to the exterior, especially on the front or this side?
Absolutely. I think that building needs a lot of work and anything that we can do to make an improvement in that. I know at least on the, on the storefront that I'm going to be taking, I'll be definitely doing a lot of cosmetic improvements to that, so. And then anything I can do to make it sure that, you know, the whole building looks uniform, I'll be doing as well, so.
Sounds like a nice addition.
All right, board, other questions or comments at this point? Staff, anything additional that we did not discuss that you believe is, should be part of the record?
I think we touched on everything.
All right. Derek, any additional information that the board should be aware that we didn't discuss?
I can't think of anything.
Okay, great. Welcome to Penfield and?
Thank you.
Look forward to you opening up in that area and adding another dimension to that, that whole, you know, operation there, so.
Definitely, so I think it's a great area, and I, I think I've seen a lot of improvement over, over the last few years in that area, and I'm going to be happy to be part of it.
You live in Penfield?
No, I live in Arondequay.
Okay. We'll forgive you.
Yeah. Well, there's a reason why I'm opening here.
Very good, very good. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you.
Please stay connected with Jim Costello if you would.
Absolutely.
He'll get a letter out to you early next week, and if you have any other questions, he'll be able to get you to the right person or group or answer him himself.
Thank you very much.
All right, great. Thank you. Nice meeting you. All right, we will, we'll move on to action items, and our first item is 2017 property maintenance contract. And so I am Andy Cervegas this fine evening. Actually, I told Andy that we had only one bid that came in. That, that bid came from a group that we have been using for a number of years. Their, their pricing for that is very reasonable. Andy and I did in fact review that, followed up to check on some things like the hauling containers and all that, just to verify pricings were, were good, accurate and realistic. And the recommendation from Andy after a discussion with myself is that contract be awarded to Boone &amp; Sons. We did something different this year. We actually had, instead of going for one year for 2017, we asked them to quote 17, 18, and 19. So I think the discussion decision by the board tonight, do we award a contract for one year or do we award a contract for three years?
What's the pricing difference? Is there a pricing difference?
My question would be, did it, since we've used the report, did it, did their price increase from last year to this year?
There was, there was a modest increase from last year.
And did it show that continual increases for the next couple of years or is it locked in?
And in some, and in some cases it's locked in, and in some cases that there, there is some upward tick associated with it. And it's more around what all the landfill charges and what the landfill charges, you know, might, might be. So the discussion, you know, for us is that, you know, we can stick with a one-year and then go back out, or we can do two. The way we structured it, we could do one, two, three, or a total rejection of everything.
And Tony, just to be clear, this is the contract that the, the bill ends up going on the property tax?
That is correct.
Of that particular property?
That is right. It is, it is, and it was, and it's upcharged, if you recall. Or put an upcharge to that. So if, you know, we spend, say, $100, then it's upcharged for administrative time. That goes on the tax bill, and then that tax bill is then paid by, if not the property owner, by the bank.
Okay.
How do you feel about it? I tend to think one year is enough, but if you think it's enough of a change in cost?
I mean, I think since, since, since I've been here, I think Boone &amp; Sons have, have been the contractor for approximately 10 years now. They've been here all while I've been here for the last seven years. We had one year where we had a second, so we were splitting the business, and that was with a Penfield business. So they've elected not to bid for whatever reason. We sent this out to approximately seven or eight different folks, and Boone &amp; Sons were the only ones that responded.
Well, that's a good point, yeah. If they're the only game in town and they're extending it three years.
Well, they've done it before for us, and I believe based on past conversations that our building department has been satisfied with their performance in the past.
That is correct.
We haven't had any issues with them.
Right.
They're consistent.
And they respond within a timeframe that we set from the first phone call. They have 72 hours, 40, 48 hours, something like that, to get to the properties. They're kind of on call.
Right.
Per se.
And if we lock in for three years, that's two years of in-house work, advertising and such that we avoid.
That is correct, yeah.
So there's a savings there as well.
I'm confident with, with three years, you know, and I'm sure in our standard contracts, there's some type of a failure to perform services clause that allows us, for whatever reason, if it's not going well, we can, you know, terminate the contract for whatever justifiable reason.
We can, and it's set up for both. If they want to terminate from the town, they have to give us a 30-day notice. We can terminate immediately.
Yeah, okay. I'm satisfied with, with going for three years.
Everybody's good with that? Okay, I will ask Andy to prepare a resolution for next Wednesday evening. All right. That will take us to public works action items. We have 839 Belvedere Heights, additional curb cut on Prospect Street. The one and the only Mr. Tate.
Welcome.
Want to take one, pass it down? Great, you guys want to come on up?
Good.
Sorry, fall asleep on the job, I apologize. Tate is, Tate is like, got the eye cross, that he makes sure you have all the information you need, which is good.
You're going to lock in the drone.
Yeah, there you go. All right, Mr. Tate, the floor is yours for a little overview.
Jake, thank you. Good evening. I was contacted earlier last week or late the week before by Mr. Bissell. He resides at 839 Belvedere Heights. He currently accesses his property off of Belvedere Heights, which is a private drive. His property does back up to the end of Prospect Street, which is currently a dead end, and he would like a curb cut coming off of Prospect to access his property. The garage that he has is not in the greatest shape. He would like to knock it down and build a new garage. Currently, the garage doors face north and face Belvedere Heights. When he builds the new garage, he would like them to face south to Prospect Street and use that as his primary means of egressing and out. Once that garage is built and he can use the paved driveway coming off of Prospect, he would like to abandon the access off of Belvedere Heights, spread topsoil and seed and turn that back to lawn, so.
Does no, no one else uses that, the Belvedere Heights?
Yeah, there are other houses on that now.
I mean, little fat elders.
No, no.
No, it's just yours.
Yeah.
So just out of curiosity, is your address still going to be 839 Belvedere Heights?
Well, initially, yes, but what, looking out further, what we like to do is make our address Prospect Street.
Right.
And put a mailbox there, yeah.
So that leads me to the next question I had. More for you then, is, is this going to affect the plowing of the end of that road in any way?
It, it will. Currently, we just kind of pile all the snow up, as you see in the picture, right up against the dead-end sign.
Right.
A few trees that are right up against there in a berm. We've discussed it, and kind of on the aerial map, you'll see a bunch of red Xs. Those are the six trees that would need to come out as part of it. Three are on private property and then three within the right-of-way just after the pavement stops.
Is the, is it the end of the street? It's been a while since I've been up there. Is that a cul-de-sac or is it sort of just a?
It's just a dead end. A dead end, it's not even a hammerhead. The, the two driveways at the very end kind of act as that hammerhead turnaround for plow trucks.
Right.
So by potentially removing the trees at the end of the cul-de-sac, we can push all of the snow. It'll actually give us more room for snow storage as well as having his driveway and offset to one side.
You could, you could push it more as you come in, keep the way the, the road is angled, somewhat angled there, you could push it to the, to the east, the northeast, if you will.
Yep, and currently there's, there's two box elders there. They're actually kind of covered in poison oaks. They're not in the greatest shape to begin with, but by removing those, it would give us quite a bit more back to.
What, um?
Is there any impact to the neighbors, the other neighbors? There's not that many, but?
No, it really wouldn't be. There's a lot of mature trees. He indicates that he'd prefer to be, you know, a 12-foot wide driveway on a narrow path zigzagging back between the trees, preserve as many as possible, create a low impact and make it look as how it does now.
What, what would the financial impact be to the town to, I guess, clean up the end of the street, obviously remove some of those trees that are sort of, it looks like within the roadway? You mentioned maybe some cleanup with the culverts or something. What would the, the impact be to the town?
Um, it depends whether he had to take the trees down, you know, as part of the approval, or if we needed to hire a cherry tree to come and take them down as roadside trees.
Okay.
And then he would take down his old trees out?
Correct.
Right. Correct. The, it's, it's a dead-end street, obviously, and everybody who lives there knows that. But people coming up there, I mean, is the dead-end sign going to stay in place or is it going to have a private drive?
I, I would prefer to move that dead-end street, or the dead-end sign back about four feet, just so the plows have a little more room and can get closer up to it, but it would still remain.
Is there, isn't there a dead-end street sign at Harmon too? Wouldn't it make more sense to put one down at, just to relocate this?
It's kind of like that.
Well, yeah, most, most streets that ended in dead end, you have a sign at the intersection of the street.
But I think what the problem, historically what the problem, you know, has been is, is that, you know, you, when you get up there, you know, the pavement just ends, and you do have the trees that are there. You would like to think, you'd like to think, right, you'd like to think, you'd like to think somebody would say, "Okay, so I'm not going to kind of go through the tree or try to drive down through there or anything." But I think part of the reason was is that it was more identification.
Because there's no house at the end.
There's no house at the end. I mean, you've got, you've got house east and west, but you don't have a house in the end, so.
I, I'm not opposed to the relocation of the driveway. I would, it sounds as if you've thought about it, but I mean, obviously, I would say that the homeowner would be responsible for the removal of the trees. Unless, unless there's some other impact to the roadway that you're aware of as far as, you know, elevation changes or any other concerns that you may have, I'm not a, yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the relocation of the driveway.
Mark, Eric, from an engineering, from an engineering standpoint, elevation-wise, from, from where the garage will be heading south up towards Prospect, concerns, issues by way of cut, fill, anything along those lines?
I don't see any immediate issues or concerns. He, you know, may need to bring in some fill just to, as the end of the street is, does drop off a little bit.
Yeah.
It's nothing significant.
Okay.
But at the same point, he could have, it's, it's not steep enough that you couldn't have a slight slope through the driveway.
Okay. And I think if I recall, there's only one other, there's one, only one other home past you to the east on that, on that road. So do you, do all of you have an, have an access easement across Belvedere? I mean, it's private drive, and is it just an access easement that everybody has?
I'm not sure what you mean by that, Tony.
The right to use Belvedere?
Yeah, so, so, so what happens, you know, so what happens is, is that it, that it appears, at least from a property line standpoint, the house in the back, you know, they have, they have a, an access, and it looks like they own right up to, just past your house, just west of your house. And then Belvedere comes in, and then you've got a couple of other homes off that. I was just curious how that may have been set up, you know, that everybody has the right to use it. I'm assuming plowing it, everybody?
Yeah, we have road agreement.
And you have a, you have a?
Road agreement that people will take care of the road.
Yep, okay, so.
Everybody pays an annual fee. Yeah, everybody pays a fee into the.
And it covers plowing or any incidental maintenance or anything like that?
Right, right.
Okay, all right. Okay, board, other questions at this point?
Unique piece of property, yeah, for sure.
So all the deer, all the deer in this, in this area.
Nice block today.
Bed down, bed down, right, yes, and I get reports, our, our daughter lives here on Harmon Road.
Oh, yeah?
So I get reports from my two little granddaughters about the number of women deer and men deer that are running through the neighborhood, so. But, all right. Staff, any other questions or comments?
The only comment I have is, obviously, everybody looks at their neighborhood over a period of time as to what it is and what it's been. It will be a little bit of a change in that neighborhood. Do you think we should notify the neighbors as well?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, before they think we're putting a road through.
Right, right.
Have you reached out to any of the neighbors?
Yes, I talked to the neighbors that would be east and west of where the entrance into the driveway would be.
Yeah.
And they, they said no problem.
Okay, that helps.
So I didn't talk to anybody else because I figure it's not going to impact anybody because it's coming in from that direction and starting right over there, and we're just going to close off our other entrance, so that was it, as far as I can see.
Yeah, so the, so the impact is, is if you've got, if you're running a daycare and you've got 30 or 40 vehicles running past their homes each day, that might be a concern. You know, if it's, you know, you and your family back and forth, my guess is, is that that's probably not an issue, so.
You don't want to run a daycare?
No, I don't think so. We ought to do that daycare thing. I don't want to get back in the daycare.
Then what I would, then, you know, what I would say is, you know, continue to work with our DPW, Eric, and as we, as we take a look at this. Certainly, I think Mr. Costello brings up a good point about notification of neighbors, just as kind of an information to that. But it sounds like you've at least started that process, and so certainly we can help support that in some way to do that. What's your plans by way of, you know, getting, getting started or thinking about looking at this?
Well, this is the first step here.
Okay.
The next step would be taking those trees out that need to be taken out.
Okay.
And then talking to a contractor for the garage and got a contractor for the driveway.
Okay.
So, you know, there's a lot to do, really.
Yeah, right, right. And then the other thing I would say is that if, and I think I heard this from Eric, that you might be looking at changing your address, and I would just indicate working with the assessor's office on that, and, you know, she can, and, and we can talk with postal service, and I mean, there's a bunch of details, you know, in and around that type of thing, so.
So you would help us out with that, doing that?
You know, certainly we can get you connected to the right folks.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we can, we can get you connected to the right folks.
Oh, good.
Okay?
I appreciate that.
All right. Other questions, board?
Big project, yeah.
Staff, other comments we should talk about?
No, I think you've covered it. As long as the neighbors are aware of what's happening, just so we don't get calls.
Okay. And it looks like Mr. Tate is assuming the responsibility for helping coordinate this, so you're in, you're in great, you're in great hands with Mr. Tate, so.
He's been a lot of help so far.
Yeah, great, good. All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, have a great evening.
Thank you for coming in.
All right, we will move on to 85 Sovereign Drive, approval of the proposed use. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. This property, you may have kind of put the original resolution that was granted by the Town Board back in February of 1994, back when it was Walt Decker's property. It's since kind of bisected or broken up a little bit since then, but I kind of highlighted that the important sections on that. One of the requirements, if you flip to the second page, is that any future use in that area needs to be approved by the Town Board, so that's why we're here tonight. We've gone through a couple other properties in the area, but this is Sovereign Drive up by Uncle Bob's is at the end of it, and we've got Bernie's Bouncers and stuff on that road. So they're looking to commit for new use, kind of on the inside loop, if you're looking at your sketch. And I do have site plans if, if you're interested in a site plan as well, I can pass those down. But this was an application before the planning board. It'll be on the planning board's November agenda as a sketch plan. Just wanted to bring it to the Town Board ahead of time because the site plan's down. Just bring it before the Town Board, see if there's any issues concerning. I also included their letter of intent. It is basically a warehousing. The gentleman is buying it from a couple of restaurants. He's looking to store materials there. Have a small kind of prep kitchen for some of his, his areas, but it's kind of a warehousing, warehousing use which seems to fit in with Uncle Bob's mini storage. Let's say you have Nolan's Party Rental, which is a very similar type thing. And then obviously this use here, so it seems to be keeping with, it's a general business zone area, but in keeping with that, that area. But I think the original intent by the board was to make sure that it was not a automotive repair or some other, you know, noxious use that, you know, may cause issue with Maple Hill Farm. Maple Hill Farm, obviously.
So, and is this?
Maple Hill Farm next door.
Is this, is this person a caterer? I mean, is?
He owns a couple of restaurants. He owns Who就跟's, he owns a couple of other restaurants in the area that he, so this is the kind of a storage spot for him, a warehousing that then he could supply his end of caterers.
And he does cater, so.
This is his store.
Will be, will there be food prep at this location?
There may be.
Okay.
Yeah, I think in his letter, he said up to 1,000 square feet of it, that he may have a small kitchen in there to do some, some prep for.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got that. So small kitchen.
I don't believe they'll be serving anything out of this location. It's a small parking lot, so it's just employees and.
Storage.
Storage and some prep work.
Board, based on item, item number three on that second page, are you comfortable with, you know, this particular use there?
I am.
Fine with it, yes.
It's just a sketch plan with the planning board, so we've still got to go through site plan, we need sketch hearing, preliminary final, so the planning board will.
But obviously, if this board wasn't supportive of that particular use, that obviously would have an impact on his planning.
Wanted to get it in as soon as we possibly could, too.
Oh, that makes, that makes sense.
Just out of curiosity, what was the definition of heavy commercial activities back in 1994?
Well, Mr. Valentine, this is code, remember, Mr.?
I'd like to, I'd like an answer to that.
I'd be more than happy to.
Like it was yesterday, actually. But the intent was to try and minimize and try not to have any type of automotive repair. As a matter of fact, the Board, if you remember, actually required as part of rezoning a 200-foot buffer from east versus the 100 requirement by code.
Right, that is correct.
They really were, were concerned on the neighbor's part about what was actually going to go there, so that's why all that occurred.
Okay. And then, and then, I mean, the auto, the auto piece was the big piece, but then when you think of, you know, other operations that might be 24-by-7 manufacturing, you know, sites and things like that, truck traffic and those types of things that.
I would assume that the truck traffic is going to be no, no more pronounced than what's already there for Nolan's Rental, right?
Probably less, I think. They have box trucks that come and go now to, to.
Yep, I'm fine with the use. I just was curious to know what that was, because it was obviously spelled out, so.
Okay, all right. Good, good to go. You can, and then we'll put a little something together for the, for the planning board so that they've got that information, they know that we've at least seen it and blessed it. Okay, very good. That brings us to 31 Correll Drive Sewer Easement Abandonment. The king of abandonments, Mr. Valentine?
This came to our attention just last week, the resident of 31 Correll, and I just put an X on the, on the property, came to us and wants to put a fence on their property, as we've seen many times before. And originally came to us from the building department for a whole harmless agreement. And as we looked at it and due to Harold's memory, you can kind of see dashed in red of where that easement is going between 31 and 29, the original ten off of Correll Drive was to feed sewers to Embry Road. We've since done a project down Embry Road to feed sewers all the way down Embry Road. We've also done sewers down Robert Road, which is the one just off to the left on it. So thought it may be more pertinent to just abandon any easement. That's Eric had the sewer department go out just today, verify, pop the ban hole, televise the line, see if there's anything there. He said there's a little stub there, but it doesn't go beyond that. It doesn't connect to anything, so there is no active sewers flowing into there from that, so.
So you got a little, you got a little stub that goes southwest and is, is capped, if you will?
Right.
And so basically, from what I'll call the triangle there, from the tip of that triangle southeasterly, or excuse me, southwesterly, we can just eliminate that, that line?
Just going to look to abandon the easement. There is no, you know, service coming through there. There's not a need to service Embry through that anymore.
Okay.
Rather than granting a whole harmless agreement for an easement that the town doesn't need or is no longer.
Doesn't really need.
No longer need.
Turn that, turn that.
Just abandon it and then clean up that.
Okay.
Makes sense. So what's the story with the same red box between 33 and 35?
That may have been the same intent between 33 and 35. I can verify, you know, if that one.
I know that, that doesn't feed anything when Robert Road was put in, or when that easement was formed. It was intended to serve Robert Road, but Robert Road has since gotten sewers that flow out to Skripen.
Right.
So it's possible that they may only abandon that easement.
We might do.
But I.
That's a good point.
We didn't take a look to see if there's any pipe in the ground and if it, how far it continues out, if it does continue all the way out to the property line.
Yep.
I don't have. To abandon it in case something happens.
Absolutely.
At least we can still get to it, so.
So the one for sure between 31 and 29, let's verify 35, 33. I think Rob makes an excellent point. If there's nothing there, let's clean that up too.
Yep, and that'll be a better man for both of those, all of those proprietors potentially to get that easement off their.
Off their property.
Property and then come and cover it and then they can do the fencing.
All right, great, let's do that. And then if we can get that taken care of, let's get that in for next Wednesday if that's possible.
Sure.
All right.
No problem.
Very good. Nothing more under Public Safety Community Service. Brings us down to informational items. Mr. Costello, discussion on possible revisions to the code regarding electrician's insurance requirement. And I think you were kind enough to supply us with some information and materials.
I did, and I have, I have a book that that came from, if anybody's interested. It just basically talks about the different towns and what they do. I don't even know how I got this, but I did get it. And earlier in the summer, Mr. Gunther.
You were on vacation that day.
That's exactly right.
That's what I heard from Costello or from Valentine and Tate.
That's probably exactly what happened. In any event, I received, we received a letter from Fritz Gunther, who represents the New York Electrical Inspection Agency, who indicated that he's been working with many towns throughout the county for the last several years, that he felt that our insurance requirements were a little bit steep compared to the other communities and went and did a survey to find out who did what. Subsequent to that, Tony and I had a brief discussion. I then talked to Jim Kreckman, who does this on a regular basis with a lot of the communities. He agreed that we are the highest by far and away and did feel that the median was about $5 million. Most of them have about $5, $3 to $5 million, and he would recommend also that we go to a $5 million limit. So as you were good enough to point out, that there was some background research that had to be done on the legislation back in 1959, the Town Board did approve an electrical code that was really based upon inspection by our building inspectors doing that. And as Tony noted, they did that up to about 1975 or so and still did a little bit after that, but then the inspection agencies came into play. They all do that for us now. We do not inspect any electrical. As a result, you know, I think that was designed to accommodate the town staff initially. As we moved forward and you saw in 2000, we did revise the code and it did require the $10 million requirement. That stayed in place since 2000. We just had our new code put in place. It is the same section of the code. There hasn't been any modification since 2000, so it's all in place. We would have to do a code revision, all the public hearing, of course. And I just wanted to get your feeling on the process of doing that or if you're comfortable keeping it the way it is. But it appears.
I think it's important for the record that they did, in fact, take a look at 21 different entities. Gates, Grease, Perrington at $5 million, and Candidate at $5 million. Clarkson's got $3 million, Rush's $2 million, Rondequoy's got a $5,000 bond. All the rest of the communities, most of which are within the County of Monroe, are all not defined.
Right.
And Penfield is the only one that stands out with $10 million. So did have a conversation with Dick Horowitz. Dick was comfortable taking it to $2, $5 million, provided the Board was supportive of that.
It appears that the original intent was to risk of employees, and that's, that's gone away, so.
That's correct.
Our employees are more valuable than non-employees.
Non-employees. We agree with that on that.
How many different code revisions have we had this year? Have you had any others?
We, at this point, we have not had any since we put in general code. We do have a couple of other small items that were in the process of gathering that we would probably bundle together.
I was going to say, can we do it all at once?
Yep, yep. One, one is around sewer use that was brought to light by the assessor's office about how much is charged, and it was kind of inconsistent. And we're going to clean, we're going to clean that up. That's a, you know, it's from 1 to 3/4, I think, in one particular area, if I, if I recall the numbers correctly. But it ended up being a lot more consistent with the rest of the things in the ordinance overall. And it was something, again, the assessor's office, once Mark D. Francesco retired, the assessor's office took that over, new, a new set of eyes, a fresh set of eyes identified that, that there was an inconsistency there. And because it is in the code, we'll have to change that, so we've got that. And there's, I think, one or two other small items that more what I would call administrative cleanup, nothing that really has a major impact one way or the other, but because it isn't a code, we'd have to have a public hearing.
Yep, and that's, that makes sense. I, I'm in favor of making a change. I just think, and it sounds as if we're off to a good start, just maybe trying to have one a B's a year, if possible, for administrative things unless there's a more urgent need to do it, but, yeah.
Yeah, and a year makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, that's all of the business that come before the Town Board this evening. So the October 26, 2016 work session was standard turned at 7:42 PM. All right, thank you, Lisa, thank you, Staff, thank you, Board.